Okay, so I will call this committee of the whole meeting for August 24th to order. I would like to acknowledge that we are on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. We have a record of attendance. You can just note that Counselor Lesser, I don't know if we have to note that or not, but Counselor Lesser is virtual. Any absent with regrets? Nothing. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Anyone? You can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Okay, approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions? Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
Um, 9G slowdown traffic signs I see is there. I brought up to add to the Cao about 1 Street in particular. I don't know if that's part of that discussion or not, but...
We can talk about it there, certainly.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Okay. Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, I was just going to suggest there is an item here, demolition request for 12 Butler Street.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's anybody here in the audience on that matter. I'm seeing one head shaking, so the building inspector is here. If you want to deal with that first, then he could be allowed to carry on with his duties.
Sure. Can't believe you don't want to hang out with us all afternoon, but all right. Okay, anyone else? additions, deletions, changes? We're good? Okay. So are we okay to go with the demolition request? Everybody's okay with that first? Okay, so we'll move that to number one. And can I have a motion to approve the agenda with that change? Okay, Counselor Bowe, seconded by Counselor Lesser. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so 11A, we have 12 Butler Street. The recommended motion there is to recommend that council approve the demolition of the dangerous building located at Civic 12 Butler Street, Yarmouth and S. Pid 902 13323, as the building is deteriorating. Okay? So did you want to...
I'll just quickly speak to it, and as I say, the building inspector, who is the administrator of Dangerous and Unsightly, is also with us and can add specifics around the situation. But in order, the property owner, as I understand it, is deceased. The notice of the potential for the building to be demolished, a notice was given and I believe received by the executor. In that notice, they're given seven days' notice that the matter will become before council, because an order that may result in demolition requires the approval of council. So I don't believe there's anybody in the room that was intending to speak to this. We did receive correspondence. Do we have a copy of that? So you've received a copy of the handwritten correspondence from a member of the family who has some intentions and has stated those intentions within the letter. So the question to council is whether to issue the order for demolition.
Okay. So where would you like to go, counsel? Go ahead, Counselor Lesser. Trying to find the letter.
Just on demolition, is it, is part of the demolition process to make sure, like, the debris is cleaned up and not, like, free-floating, I guess? I know that sometimes when that happens, when we, when...
Did he freeze?
Yeah.
Okay, you have to repeat that again because you froze.
Okay, sorry. Is part of demolition orders that there will be something to mediate the dust, dust particles in the neighborhood?
The question is, is part of the demolition to keep the dust down in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Yes. He's, and he is indicating yes. Counselor Heather?
Yes, thank you. So just to clarify, so this is an order to the property owner to demolish the house, and the cost would be on the property owner?
Sorry, we were trying to find the letter.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, just to kind of clarify, that this is an order for the property owner to demolish the house, or to have the town do it, and the property owner would pay for it?
This would be the town would undertake it. The order would stand, and if not, follow through with, I don't know what time period was on the order, but if it wasn't done, the town would do it and apply the cost to the property as a lien.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I did drive by that property actually this afternoon, and that property has been in disarray for many years. I remember driving by there five years ago, and it hasn't changed, you know, hasn't been improved significantly. So, you know, I think it is time that we did address that property.
Counselor Dairs?
Yeah, just in reviewing the correspondence that we received from the property owner, or a representative of the property owner, I'm not sure what status he has, there's some indication that he had done some work on the property to correct some situations that were identified to him by the building inspector. I'm just wondering if the building inspector can confirm or deny if that took place.
Yeah. You can, you... Glenn, can, would you mind, sorry, no, I know people don't like the microphone, but we just, because we have people online, so thank you for that.
Yes, he got a permit, and he was going to do the renovations. And he started with shingling over top, the old shingles, and they've started blowing off again. And if the pictures I took, there's some of these are starting to fall. That's all he's ever done to that property. We went inside, took the pictures as, we sent the pictures from inside back in 2021, and we had to go take care of a broken window, so we just took pictures of the inside again. There's nothing been done. So I don't know what he done to improve it. When I sent light and power, a picture of the meter, they hauled that power off the building right away. In two days, it was gone, and he's never spoke to me again, the so-called owner.
Yeah, I'll see the pictures.
Okay. Did you, did you have another question for him?
I'm just reviewing the correspondence, sorry.
Yeah, hang on. We're just rereading the letter.
No, I guess that's it for, thank you, Glenn. Appreciate it.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Bowe.
Oh, thank you, your worship. So in his correspondence, he is indicating that he wants to rip it down to the foundation and rebuild. We've received...
Nice and loud. Nice and loud.
Okay, sorry. Here, how about this? Uh, yeah, okay. So in his order, he's saying, in his letter, he's saying he wants to rip down, rip it down to the foundation and then rebuild.
Okay.
So we've received this communication from whoever is representing the property owner. What obligation does that give us as a council? If the intent is that he's going to do the work, I just, like, do, I don't, where does that leave us as a council? I mean, the, I guess, I guess we're going to give him an order that he do it, is that right? And if it's not done by a certain time, then we have the authority to go in and get it done. I'm okay with that. Okay, great. Thank you.
That's intention. If he's made that, he called me on Monday, and I've already put the request, so it was out of my hands, and he said something about tearing it down. Well, you have to give a definite timeframe, because he's never done nothing yet that he said he was going to do.
Yeah. It's overwhelming.
It will be still there this winter if he tears it down. I can guarantee you that.
Okay.
Because he's gone, what, out west now?
So a question for clarity. So Glenn, he has not been given a timeline by which he must tear it down?
No.
We posted the letter.
Okay, so if council wishes to proceed with a demolition, and they said if he doesn't do it within four weeks, then you could advise him that he has four weeks to do it himself, otherwise the town will do it.
Yep.
And if the town does it, just to be clear, we're not going to leave an open hole so that somebody can build on it.
No.
Right? That will leave another dangerous situation.
Okay, Counselor, or Deputy Mayor?
And this is an ongoing issue for how long? I think you mentioned 2021, did you?
That's the first time we went into it.
Okay.
We got into it.
So it's been two years.
There was complaint about unsightly, so we went to investigate. He actually was there at the time. He let us in the house. That's why we got all the pictures.
Okay. It's been ongoing, yeah. Thank you.
It was rotten then.
Okay, so my question here to the CAO, what we have as a motion is to recommend that we approve the demolition of the dangerous building located at 12 Butler Street. Okay? What you were saying to our inspector just a minute ago is, do we, do we want to put in there if he has not demolished it within?
So it would be an order to demolish to the owner with a timeframe, and if he doesn't complete it, then the town would do it. That would be the consequence of him not complying with the order.
Okay. So either way, it's coming down?
Either.
It's a matter of who pays. Okay. So are we, we're good with the motion the way it is anyway? So we moved and seconded it? All right. Anything further before we vote on this? Okay? You're good? Derek? You're good? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you.
Just one question.
Yes.
Who does the order to, are you going to do the order to him? You're going to do the order? Okay. I just wanted to know who's...
You got it, you got it covered.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Yeah, we can do the special meeting. Oh, that wasn't fair. Hang on, Glenn. Glenn? Hang on, you're not, you're not free yet.
Question to the solicitor. So in the act...
Nice and loud, so Glenn can hear.
Yeah, in the act, the order to demolish is considered by council or a committee as designated by council. So committee of the whole would be fine for this?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. I think it didn't, didn't even committee the whole last time we had a demolition?
I don't recall. Well, we can, we can tidy it up by having a special town council after this, and just to be 100% sure.
Yeah. I'm just trying to remember.
All right, we're good. We'll handle it either way.
I think the one from Commercial Street went through committee of the whole, the one we took down.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Here we go back up to the top. Okay, so we have the, let's start with the CAO's report. Is there anything on there that you wanted to ask the CAO? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Bowe.
I'm not sure. I'm looking for kind of an update on the Lake George watershed, and maybe it's something we should be discussing in camera, because it has to do with some of the files that are, that were open the last time we talked about it, so is this possible?
There's some, there's many issues with Lake George. So if you're speaking about prosecutions, we can speak about that in camera.
Okay.
If you're speaking about lawsuits, we can speak about that in camera.
Okay.
There are other things like designated as protected wilderness area, those sorts of things that we can discuss.
No, I'm interested in just an update on the files, so that's great. Thank you. Then we have, anything else for the CAO? Okay, Fire Department, and the chief is here. Any questions for the chief? You got something to share with us? Oh.
I prefer a pulpit. Anyway, this'll work, I guess, for today.
Is that mic on?
Yes, speak up.
Say, I prefer a pulpit, but I'll, we'll do this for today.
Thank you.
Any questions for my report first, before I...
Don't see any.
No. Okay, it's just a point of interest. We're reviewing the Fire Department policy. You'll see in the coming weeks, I assume, we're looking at revising, changing from 19 years of age to become a member to 16. The ranges age anywhere from 16 to 18 across the province. You can take level one firefighter at the Nova Scotia Firefighter School is young at 16, with parental consent. So we're looking at changing some of those, that policy specifically, that bylaw, sorry. We've got some younger guys and girls interested, and we're trying to capture that demographic, so just a, just a quick note.
Good. Awesome. Anything else for the chief? Go ahead there, deputy.
Just thinking with the age dropping like that, if you ever wanted to do something at the high school, both Mr. Lesser and myself are there, be happy to do it if we could, or...
Yeah, actually, that, there are other school boards that you can get credits for taking level one firefighter, so we'd probably look into that as well.
For sure.
We could reach a lot of kids that way, for sure. Young women, men and women, yeah.
Good. Counselor Cleveland?
Just a curious question, actually. Is that something that you change within the auspices of the Fire Department itself, or does that have to come through?
It's a bylaw. It's a town or yard by law we have to change, yeah. Yeah. It's, it's part of my Fire Department bylaws, so I've got some persons interested now that are 18, and we're going to use to get them started, some creative ways to get them in so we don't lose them, but we need to get that policy, that bylaw changed, yeah.
You know, it's funny, I've talked, I deal with a lot of views in the course of, as of course do Steve and Derek, but this conversation has come up more than once, and I think it's absolutely the right thing to do. And if someone at the age of 16 is that interested, nobody should be impeding them. They should be allowed to at least give it a try, so.
Yeah. It may have, may have changed the direction of my life if I'd have tried this a little younger, so.
Yeah.
He may have been had me longer, who knows?
Thank you.
Good. Thanks very much. Okay, operational services and Chad's here. Any questions for Chad? Go ahead, Counselor Bowe.
Thank you, your worship. Just interested in the report on the marina. Very interesting information, and, you know, you mentioned some challenges that, but I'm not hearing, what do you need from us to incentivize you to do, to do work on or make that a priority? I'm just, I'm very interested. I think that the marina has capacity to, I hear great things from people outside of the community about the marina services and the, what's available here, and the fact that we are a border services entry point, but I'm a little concerned about what our capacity is now and what we could do to grow it, and also to preserve what we have already here. So I guess my question is sort of along the lines of, you know, when you're dreaming, what are you dreaming about as far as the marina is concerned?
Well, the answer to your question, there's really nothing we require from council yet. Maybe wait till the end of the season, and we'll provide you with a more comprehensive report, and we'll itemize the list and come up with, like, if there's items that require repairs, we'll give a cost estimate. That way we can prioritize what we need to do for next season.
Can I ask you, I noticed that you mentioned three moorings. Those are the off, the in-the-water moorings?
Yes.
You know, I remember when that work was being done. I know I'm old. It seems to me like there were a lot more than three moorings. Have they decreased the number over the years?
There may have been in the past. This is the data my staff provided with me. I would have thought there was more as well. I thought there was six at one point, but...
Yeah.
The moorings aren't well-used. They'd rather dock.
Dock.
Yeah.
And so can you tell me, oh, maybe this is something for the Port Authority, on the marginal wharf, there are floating, what I think are floating docks. Where do they norm, are they normally part of the marinas, our marina system, or are they have, or do they have to do with the Port Authority? Is everything that we have in the water?
Yes, except for rudders. We weren't able to put a few floating docks in.
Okay, maybe that's what they are.
That's what you see, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. And is there any, what needs to be done to capitalize on the rudders piece of things?
Some investments, some, yeah, some money investments and some infrastructure upgrades and renewed agreement with Kilham Brothers Limited.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's lapsed?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
What's the limited space for expansion?
Well, it's just, I've overheard some discussions at council about expanding the marina.
Yeah.
We don't know, there's really no room to expand, we don't think.
Out of the water?
We, highly regulated. It's an option maybe, but I think we'd have to, we'd have to go through probably three or four regulatory agencies to expand outward, so that's something we can include in our end-of-season report.
Yeah, go ahead.
So there's a couple things. So one of the, one of the thoughts that has been kicked around, I think it might be in the waterfront action plan, is acquire more property and therefore have more waterfront, on which to expand the marina. And the other is the inner basin kind of between the ferry terminal and Lobster Rock Wharf. There's kind of a basin in there, and I know that's been talked about, because it's very protected as a leisure marina potential in the future as well. The other thing about Kilham's Wharf is, you may recall a few years ago, we did a bit of work to deal with the, try to deal with the issue of the subsidence...
Yeah.
...below the deck on Kilham's Wharf, and there were, there were some actions taken, some sandbags, concrete bags placed under there, and we do periodically have surveyors come and recheck certain rocks to make sure that they haven't moved, because if the, if the marina is moving, then we're in a situation of, okay, it's time to rebuild. I know DiMario through, with his grant writer, had been looking into the possibility of sea level rise and monies that might be available to attract for rebuilding that wharf, because there's no doubt that sea activity and perhaps the higher level of sea activity has caused some subsidence, and there's an argument to be made that that's an eligible project if we can just find the right program. So it's not a, it's not an inexpensive capital project, but if we're able to find a partner, then it makes it much more affordable and attractive to move forward on. So right now, I don't think the wharf is moving, but it's something we have to keep an eye.
I feel like, like the wharf is important. I love the idea of the marina because of who we are and where we are. Like, we're just such a central point of, you know, the ability for people to land here with their vessels, but like you said, the regulatory bodies, which is, that's bigger than the mountain.
Yeah.
And then it seems like everything backwards on land has to be fixed. Like, that's the, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then, like, the heaving piece?
One of the nice things about the, about the marina that I don't think we were so conscious about or so aware of, or at least I wasn't until COVID, was that it is in fact a port that you can, that can be your first port of call for an international sailor to arrive, that they can come to Kilham's Wharf and customs will come and clear the vessel. During COVID, during the worst parts of COVID, it was one of only three ports in Nova Scotia where you could make that first port of call. And though that made us a little nervous, it made us also aware that that opportunity or that privilege was there, that standing was there for Kilham's Wharf. So it is, it is something that probably causes us to have a little more traffic at the marina as well.
I'd love the traffic. Go ahead, Counselor.
Oh, thank you. To answer one question, there were more than three moorings. I recall the days during the Yarmouth yacht races that there were more than three vessels moored off, because I was doing the water taxiing, and so I know they were there. Thank you for your report, and it's really nice to see this information, because it is anemic, all of us think. And that wharf is the, that marina is the heartbeat of the waterfront. It's also, as has been stated here, it's a reason to keep the Canadian Border Services in Yarmouth. And, you know, a second reason would be if we ever got some international traffic at the airport, but we're working on that. I see the challenges, and that's one of the things I was interested in, because, you know, it is showing fair wear and tear, no doubt. And so I'm wondering, when can we reasonably expect estimates of price tags on these items?
The marina season ends middle of October, so I would suggest probably before the new year, we could have some budget estimates. And thanks for asking for the report. This wouldn't have been in my consciousness, but I would suggest maybe, maybe before the new year, we could have some estimates.
Okay.
But be prepared. They're not going to be, they're not going to be cheap.
And would you also prioritize the list?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, no, this is part two. Not sure whether I should be addressing this to you, or DiMario, or to the CAO, but last week's rain had me thinking. There was a few periods where the zipper opened and we were in a deluge here, and I have been thinking a lot about, you know, flood management, and I'm struggling because I'm not really sure how we municipally fit in with the provincial plan, but it's my understanding that the province has done floodplain mapping. Is that, am I right on that? That there should, that the province has a responsibility or is in the process of doing floodplain mapping, and then it's up to the municipalities to kind of develop their plans? Is that...
Yeah, so they've done, they've done a project, but I think we were ahead of them actually in doing sea level rise mapping. DiMario may know more than I on that. I know within the, within our municipal planning strategy, we do have provisions regarding sea level rise.
Yeah.
As far as flooding from rain, I know we do have a stormwater management plan. I don't know if that's been, been updated recently or taken into account climate change, but I share your concerns time to time when those deluges happen.
Thank you. So would there be an appropriate moment, and it's not urgent, but would it be appropriate for council to be briefed at some point on, you know, in view of these recent events that have been going on in the province of, you know, just massive flooding? I would like to know, as a counselor, what are the areas that are considered to be most vulnerable in the town? And also how the municipality of Yarmouth's watershed impacts us, and whether there is a cooperation between the two units to ensure that there aren't sort of downstream effects of some of the decisions that they're making or not making in the municipality? I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to think proactively about what can be, what can be done to shore up our efforts at mitigation for these events which are going to come. I mean, we've just been lucky at this point, so I guess I'm just looking for direction and...
No, you're, so DiMario has been working on a project regarding the Broadbrook. So Broadbrook is, is the stormwater conduit for a significant part of town, let's call it, east of Pleasant Street. All the stormwater winds up in Broadbrook. Broadbrook has very little... Broadbrook has very little elevation change and narrows considerably as you go downstream. That has, from time to time over the years, and for many years, it's gotten backed up and caused some flooding. So we have an environmentally sensitive zone in our land use planning under which you cannot build in, in that area. That's to protect the people. It has been the case in the past that some of our storm and sanitary mixed system has caused backups and, and problems for, for homeowners. We have done several projects over the years. I'm going to say at least six stormwater separation projects where the, the intent was to take stormwater and send it directly to the harbor rather than putting it in the combined system. We've noticed some difference in, in the amount of influence that we're treating at the, at the wastewater plant. As a result of that, it is, it is pretty obvious when you look at the data. So that's showing some impact, especially considering increased intensity rainfall. The system also has bypass capability. So at a certain level of, of flow, there are points in the system where the water goes straight into the harbor. And, and that's kind of a relief valve, I guess, that we like to see used sparingly, but, but it does, it does occur. I'd ask Chad to comment on whether or not we're seeing less, I'm, I'm hearing less about basement flooding. And I take that to be a result of, of the stormwater separation. Because the only way a basement floods is if stormwater gets in the system. And the more we divert, the less common I think those are. And I get fewer, I'm getting fewer calls and complaints, and I think the mayor is. So I'd ask Chad if in fact that's, that's anecdotal or if that's fact that...
Nope, that's a fact, yeah. That, that sewer separation projects, plus we have a pretty robust sewer cleaning and video inspection program. And we video inspect, we video inspect and clean the, the combined sewers that Jeff talked about. So I think we, we're holding up fairly well as far as stormwater management, but a lot of work to be done, yeah.
The, sorry. As far as the municipality goes, and I'm not sure I'm ans- I'm not sure I or we are answering your question fulsomely, but we're picking away at pieces of it, I guess, some, some key pieces. I don't know beyond the Broadbrook implication. That's more about the outflow of stormwater rather than the inflow. But that is a concern. It's been on our radar for a long time. It involves some provincial agencies and approvals that we need to approve, as well as in other municipal jurisdictions, and maybe, maybe a lot of private property owners. But DiMario has some work on his, on his agenda related to that.
Go ahead.
And just with, just in relation to Broadbrook, I think I've seen in our budget a line item regarding cleaning up the Alders and things in Broadbrook. I think last year it wasn't u- the money wasn't used. Are there any plans to, to look, I, I don't know if that's beyond our borders or within our borders?
That is actually in, in the capital budget.
Yeah.
And it's a, it's a capital item. It's, it's the work I'm referring to, DiMario working on.
Okay.
So it isn't just Alders. It's a, it's a more extensive project.
Perfect, okay. That's great. Thank you.
Good. Any more questions for Chad? Yeah, thanks very much. I, it's a, it's a long list, and I know you guys are, the whole team, you never stop. So thanks.
Thank you.
Planning and economic development. And Natalie's here. Any questions for Natalie? That was way too easy.
I guess we'll be talking about it later. There's an item later on the agenda about changes to the facade society. So that'll come later, right? Okay, all right.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
No question. You can stay there. Just a quick comment, though, because she is quite involved in that. That switch is happening, of course, this week, again, the last one. And I've been watching very carefully the weather forecast, and the last one I saw, they changed their minds. The last one, I swear, the last one I saw from the Weather Network says a mix of sun and cloud for Sunday. So here's hoping.
Know what that means?
Yeah, we're doomed, yeah.
Sorry. Don't plan your barbecue around the Weather Network. But yes, that's good news. That was, and by the way, that was, I think everybody would have, anybody that went downtown in the last switch, that was, like, the ante was upped on that one. Cost me a lot of money. It's a lot of vendors. But it was fun. It was, it was vibrant. Well, there's a lady in the audience that was here. Were you there at, at one of the tables? Yes.
Yes.
That's what I thought. Yeah, so we stopped by there to say hello and bought some stuff and, at different food. There was different food there. Like, it was really nice. It was, huh? There was a good juggler. I got a selfie with him because he's famous. So yeah, good job on that one. To the whole team. Okay, nothing else for Natalie there? Good. Thanks, Nat. Okay, engineering, DiMario's here. Anything for DiMario? Did you need to share anything with us? Go ahead, deputy, and then...
Just more of a comment, not a question, just airing out a lot of great things about the sidewalk that goes from Jody Shelley up to, in Canucks. That was kind of, was hard for a lot of people to, you know, go for a little walk or not, and just that little piece that finish it off. And it looks great with the curb and everything, so great job.
Thank you.
I'll second that. A lot of, a lot of, you're right, a lot of comments. People are, like, the whole community is thrilled with the, these active transportation trails. And it's, there's so many reasons to do it, right? Never mind the sidewalk. I can barely get by somebody on the sidewalk. But, but these trails are amazing. And there's people out, and we've all said it at the table, it's building community. People are meeting people they've never met before that they didn't even know live three doors down. Like, this is, this is great. And, and I love that, you know, the folks, I call them the electric scooters, you know, and, and the people with some disabilities and things like that. They can get from point A to point B as easily as anybody on a bicycle. It's just a beautiful, like, everybody deserves to do, to be able to do everything regardless of anything. And it's, I, look, I got goosebumps on my goosebumps. Go ahead, councillor.
All right, one thing I did want to mention, because I am on those trails all the time, probably twice a day sometimes. And I apologize in advance because I probably should have actually just put this on the agenda. But when you're heading down that side, when you've just, the area you've just finished on, on that side, you're walking down, you cross the road. If you're going down Parade Street, you're on sidewalk again. And then you run out of sidewalk, and there's no crosswalk to get to the other sidewalk. And there really should be a crosswalk there. It's, it's, it's at Myrtle Street and where Mountain Cemetery is. I'm just throwing that out there. But somebody should, maybe it should be me, but we should.
Kids cross there.
Yeah, kids cross there. Yeah, there should be a crosswalk.
So you want to make a motion to have staff look at that? That's just a hint.
I would have if I had put it on the agenda. God, can I make a motion to have staff look at putting in a crosswalk at the end of this sidewalk on one side to link the other side? Because it's wonderful to go the other way up Jody Shelley, but if you're heading down Parade, you, you run out.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Councillor Lassiter, you didn't vote, you're voting for the crosswalk, right? Just to be clear.
I always put for the crosswalk.
All those in favor? Aye, okay. I was, I was just going to say this for clarification, because we have made a couple changes to how we do the, you know, adding agenda items. But when something comes up, especially in a committee of the whole, because we're talking to the engineer or somebody, that's, that's perfectly fine. It's, it's not, you're not blindsiding us. And that's, am I right?
Yep.
Yeah. And you could certainly add items to the Cow agenda, like right at the table. We just want to make sure we don't, we're not stifling anyone. But council, there's no second sober thought on council. Okay, we're good for, for our engineer?
Do you need to announce anything about engineer?
Okay, you're good. No questions? Well, I don't, I, I didn't know if you had a question. Hmm? Yeah, good. Finance. Jerry's here with our money. No questions for Jerry? Okay, anything you need to tell us?
Talking later.
Okay, good. Recreation. Frank's here. Anything for Frank? You're winding down for the summer a little bit. Been a busy summer. Yeah.
Lots of rain.
Lots of rain. Didn't seem to stop much. Kind of veered things. Go ahead.
Yeah, just one, one quick question, Frank. The, the day camps that are held, I think my, my granddaughter, like, picks and chooses which day she's going, and then she, so is that how that's working? Like, she, rather than go five days in a row, she can go like Monday, Wednesday, Friday if she chooses.
Yeah, every day is a different theme, different activities. So a lot of people do that. A lot of, a lot of parents put their kids in for a whole week at a time, but a lot of kids will look at the schedule and say, I want to do this day and that day and that day. So...
Yeah. No, I think it's very innovative. I think, I know it works well for her because she's got other activities that she worked, that she does outside. And, and some days she's just, you know, isn't interested. So I really applaud you for having that kind of an option. Thank you.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Okay, Recreation. Okay, so business. Active transportation plan, next steps.
So, so your worship, last committee of the whole, we talked about our active transportation plan and some of the things that we might do next. And just as a reminder, there were some things there, and I would go so far as to recommend that these might be the next steps that we take. There was several times through, through the plan, there was, was mention of share the road signs. I think that's an area that we could look at in, in increasing the number of share the road signs, reminders to motorists that, that cyclists are among us. Looking at, at the possibility of additional bike lanes. So where bike lanes, where active transportation trails aren't possible, potentially looking at bike lanes. So that would be a little bit further study. And I know as far as AT trails go, I think the engineer has mentioned Stars Road, the section along in front, from Jody Shelley Drive to Haley Road as a section that's both of interest to the province as well as part of the plan that we had submitted a few years ago. And finally, the Waterfront Advisory Committee has sent, sent to staff a request to, to advise on sort of the process of how do, how do we look at the seawall and, and that piece of, of, of infrastructure that is also part of an, an active transportation trail. So those are some things that seemed kind of timely and, and apparent to me that, that we could do as, as kind of next steps on the plan. But your worship, it is up to council.
Okay. Any thoughts there? More information for now, or?
I'll happily make a motion that we move forward with those next steps. That's absolutely the way to go. Thank you.
Okay, seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Hi, just wondering, like, is there any prioritization of these next steps in terms of, you know, or is it more a function of where can we find partnering dollars to help us?
So the Stars Road Trail would probably be the, you've got two real infrastructure projects there. One is not even, well, it's only a...
An idea.
A draw, an idea. There's no concept yet developed of that. The, the Stars Road Active Transportation Trail, we, DiMario's got quite adept at popping those in, so I think he knows the formula or the recipe. So if the money is, is available in next year's capital budget, that might be something that you see that soon. As far as signage or, or bike lanes, we, we might get some assistance with the bike lanes. It would be a fair, relatively inexpensive consultation project. And signage would be a matter of just throw something else on, on Chad's, Chad's long list to kind of survey the town and where, where those signs might be, might be needed.
Okay.
So in terms of priority, you know, the, the quick and easy ones will happen relatively quick and easy relative, compared to the, the, the big one there is the, is the waterfront. And we don't know, that hasn't been, you know, approved by council as such. There's some work to be done to look into feasibility, what that might even look like. So that one is baby steps.
Yeah.
But, but you may get a recommendation coming in the not-too-distant future to start taking some of those baby steps.
Great, thank you.
Okay, you ready for the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, 9B, RCMP report. Deputy Mayor? Go ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion. It's not the same as it's written, but to recommend that council request the RCMP to present their quarterly, quarterly report four times a year at the Committee of the Whole. So every time a quarterly report comes, that they would come and be invited anytime that the chief feels that he would like to come. I just, well, I'll, once it's seconded, I'll speak more to that.
Okay, seconded. Go ahead.
I just feel a lot of times when we're talking in the community, they don't know the full extent of the efforts that RCMP are putting forward. And sometimes when they don't know things, it's nice when they can be here, they can hear the report themselves. We can ask the questions on behalf of them and, you know, a little more user-friendly and better PR for them as well. And in case we have anything we'd like to address, we can talk directly and not have to wait for the committee to kind of roll through. So it's my thinking behind that one.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have any thought? Go ahead, councillor Lassiter.
Yeah, I think from our last meeting, they've started implementing fines for loud mufflers, finally. And that's a, that's a positive one, I think. Not, maybe not for the people getting the fines, but for the many calls that we get from people saying that they're too loud. So that's a, that's a positive step.
Okay, anyone else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Presentation policy, councillor Dares?
Yes, I'd like to move that we recommend the council revisit the presentation policy in regards to the 10-minute time limit.
Okay, moved and seconded. Now, that might already be done.
So, yeah.
Go ahead.
So I just want to find here, I, I had, sorry, your worship, speaking in, so we looked at the council agendas policy. There was no time limit in there, which caused me a little surprised because, this is my memory, my memory confession. I had remembered it was in there. And so we did a little bit of research back to as far as 2013 and found that around 2015, the provision for the 10-minute time limit moved from the policy to the bylaw. So in our council meetings bylaw, we have the following wording, if I can find it. Here So the wording says, presentations will be limited to 10 minutes unless council or committee of the whole determines a longer period of time is needed. And so it has been your practice to, we tell people 10 minutes. We rarely cut people off. But this is to say, you really don't have to cut people off. You can, and if you wish, if you know, and I know we've talked about having Mr. Purdy come in and speak, and we understand his presentation may be considerably longer. Council can say, let's have him in for an hour and a half. And then we know, and we communicate that to him, and he knows ahead of time. It also means that in the case of a, a presentation that you're receiving, 10 minutes passed, you don't have to stop somebody. You know, and if somebody feels constrained, they can have that conversation with you. But I, I, there aren't many times when people have felt, when council has, has, has cut somebody off. There may be many times when people feel rushed if they have a longer presentation. I think that's probably what's given rise to this conversation. So if we know somebody has a longer presentation, when they request to present to council, if they ask for the time, and maybe Lindsay can facilitate that, you know, how much time and maybe Lindsay can facilitate that, you know, "How much time do you think you need?" We normally provide 10. When the request comes to you in the first instance, we can also talk about the time that might be requested or required to do an effective job. And you can make that decision along with allowing the presentation, how long you're going to allow. Make sense?
Yeah, definitely. Go ahead.
It's okay, you nailed it. You know, with the times I've been sitting at this table, I don't think anyone's ever been cut off.
No.
And so I don't think that's the issue. The issue was that some people come to the table doing their very best to respect a 10-minute time limit. And as a result, we're not really getting the full package. We're not getting all the information that they would like to impart. So I think so long as we know that, as long as people know that we would, you know, typically you'd have a 10-minute presentation or we would give you 10 minutes, but if you need more time, please let us know. As long as that message is, you know, transmitted or telegraphed to them prior to the meeting. Because I have sat here and watched somebody try to respect that 10 minutes and left a lot of questions unanswered. And left a lot of information that just didn't get passed on. So, you know, that was the intent of the motion.
Yeah, that's fair. That's very fair. So Lindsay, you can just ask them how much time? The other thing, I'm just going to put this on the table. The other thing is with not changing that 10 minutes, but asking them, you know, "Do you think you'll need more time?" There are folks that would come in and talk an hour and we only need five minutes. Right? That's, that was the fear. That was why the 10 minutes, right? Because we've... We've, I've seen it. No, we haven't, no, no. We wouldn't be rude. But, and then other people would come in. If they had 30 minutes, they would take the 30 minutes, not even needing it. So I like that, that you can just ask them and we can say, "Okay, this is, you know, you can have this much time, but we're not going to cut them off." So we got a motion on the floor.
Sold.
Okay. Lawyer? I mean... Legal? So we have a motion on the floor and it's seconded, but we don't need it anymore. Just withdraw.
Well, the mover and the seconder can agree to withdraw.
Okay. Okay. Okay, both withdrawn. Okay, thank you. That was an easy one. Okay. Remo bylaw amendment. The recommended motion there is to recommend that council approve first reading to amend the regional emergency management bylaw to include provisions of the Emergency Management Act. Okay? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so we had submitted our Remo bylaw, which was required when we became Remo. And the province, as they sometimes do, review bylaws that we submit and they found some inconsistencies. So all three municipalities submitted the same, essentially the same bylaw, change names, protect the innocent. And so all three have been communicated back to make these specific changes. So this will bring us in alignment with the act.
Okay. All right. You're making the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Seconded. Counselor Lesser? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Facade society mural program expansion. Recommended motion there is to recommend that council approve the facade society's request and expand the boundaries of the mural program from Vancouver to Argyle Street. Okay, so moved and seconded. I have a question, though. Why wouldn't we do the facade and the murals? Is it, like, is it separate? Okay. All right. Okay, any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Baff.
Just a question with regard to the designation of the boundaries. In the letter, they refer to extending the boundary so that the murals program could extend from Vancouver to Argyle. But what about the cross streets? How is that defined within the existing policy? I'm assuming the central business district is included, so all of the, all the side streets would be included in that?
Yeah, so Counselor Baff, so that includes the side streets. So as long as the property is commercially assessed, they can apply for the program. So that includes all the side streets contained from Argyle to Vancouver, Willow to Water. And there's a strip on Pleasant Street that can also, that are also eligible to apply.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so just an observation, just, and I'm just looking for feedback. Is there any concern that extending the mural program to that reach will inhibit the, or diminish the effect of it within the community? Because it becomes so dispersed that, you know, you, it kind of, there's not, there's... Is there a concern about, my concern is about uniformity, is about the wow factor. And if it's in the central business district, which is kind of, you know, the center of, you know, so it's water streets that, you know, it encompasses the pedestrian zone that most people are involved with in retail downtown. Because we have limited funds. So that's just my only concern is that, yeah, I'm just worried about the dispersion factor of making it that big. And I'm just wondering if anyone else has a concern. It's not a deal breaker, but I'm just making that observation.
So in the society contained the mural program within the first two years, so they were able to successfully award five applications. So there's a couple on Water Street, then Brown Street. And there is certainly interest in the future for some other property owners that wish to have a mural in the downtown core. So the society works with property owners and it's been very difficult. You would think property owners would be interested, but it's very limited. And then to have the appropriate wall. And I mean, again, it could be on the wall or as you've seen in some circumstances, it's a, it's an image that's on a board that's attached. But there are some anchor locations that are working with artists and they're doing some placemaking design that I think would be very interesting for the town. So that's why we, the society said, "Well, we will need to get approval from council for those." But definitely the society looks at that saturation, but are also cognizant that there are some really great locations that can be anchor locations in the town. So that's why they're asking for the expansion.
So I, and I, oh, sorry, we're gonna...
My question?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay. Because I hear exactly what you're saying. We want the wow factor. But I also sit here thinking, we can prepare for today and our job is to prepare for the future. So, right, I think what's going to happen, because we've had COVID and we've had a lot of, there's a lot of damage done to a lot of businesses. You know, and they're trying to recoup, so it's difficult to do certain things. But I love Argyle to Vancouver because it just, it covers the whole. And there are some pretty cool spots that are, that are excited about that. So I think we might not be sitting here when we get that full saturation, but we'll be walking around saying, "Look at that." Anything else here? So, what's that? Certainly, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, Natalie. Community asset donation program policy amendment. To recommend that council amend the community asset donation program policy to include a timeline process and annual recognition. Okay, it's been moved, seconded. Okay, go ahead there. Are you going to help us?
No, if you're good, I'm...
Cefah? Yeah, go ahead.
I'll just speak to that because I think it came from another meeting where I spoke to this. But it was, there had been some issues in the past, and this was to help clarify that, where donations were made through the town, but it wasn't always the process of getting the money out in a timely manner and letting the organization know in a timely manner wasn't always carried out. So this was just looking to put that into a policy so that there was a timeline as to when the money came in, as to when the person, the organization would be notified and a process for that so that they could then thank the donor for their contribution. And the annual recognition was just, that was already in the policy, but hadn't been carried out. So it was just to put that in, back in there. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. What were you thinking, Jerry? You were going to need to provide numbers, never mind.
No, I just, just a quick comment. So when staff reviewed it, we did see that, you know, the benefit of putting in that line to say that we would do those reports on a weekly basis. The little endendum at the end is kind of what the process has been. It just wasn't on a weekly, and I could see, it's a small community, so there are times people make donations and then they bump into the group or someone that's part of that, the funding organization. And they say, "Oh, yeah, I donated to your cause." And they're like, "Oh, did you? Thanks," because they weren't aware, so. And at times it could take, you know, a few weeks before we let them know. So this way we'll just build it in. It'll be a weekly thing that staff person does. It's not a big deal. Depending on what projects are going on, we do get a flurry of donations, but typically not a lot every week. So it won't be that much extra work for staff to do. So we'll do that.
Good. Thank you. All right. Slow down traffic signs. The recommended motion there is to recommend that council direct staff to investigate installing the slow down traffic signs throughout town on different streets. Go ahead.
Yep, I'll make the motion. I also wanted to just mention, I see very effectively used in some other towns, an actual, I don't know how it works, but there's a radar where, you know, yeah, you're going by and you're doing 80 in a 30 zone, that kind of thing. I'm not sure how expensive those are, but they are effective. Not me. Yeah, yeah. You could look at it that way, I suppose. Challenge accepted.
You got a second? Did you second?
Sorry, Tom.
Were you going to say?
Yeah, I was going to ask. Well, I guess, you know, if there are streets in particular where you, where you would suggest that it might be a problem, that would be, that would be helpful. And that can come after, after the fact. And maybe staff have some ideas on that as well. We did look into the radar signs several years ago.
I remember that.
And what the RCMP had advised us on that is that those are most beneficial when you're going from a, from an area that might be, let's say, a 70 or an 80 zone down to a 50 or 60. And sometimes the road and the lay of the land doesn't necessarily signal slowdown, but the sign does. And so you provide that extra cue to somebody that, hey, it's time, it's time to slow down. And they can be effective in that, in that way. But I've also thought, as Counselor Dairs sort of alluded to a moment ago, that put in the wrong place, they could create a, an opportunity, let's say, or a challenge as opposed to a, the message we're trying to deliver.
Yeah, I think, like, for example, if you go to AFN, you'll see, you know, "Slow down, our children are important to us," like those types of things. And I, sometimes it just, it's enough to just, you know, click the consciousness that somebody, you need, you need to slow down. And I know that, for example, my street, but I've had to pull over to the side on some streets just to look, because I'm like, are they, are they speeding? Are they drunk? Are they what? Because they're just moving, like, they're moving. But to go to the stop sign to, from the stop sign past my house, you know, on the, I don't know, it's not on the way to the hospital. It's, my heart's in my throat all the time thinking if there's, if there's somebody coming off the tracks there. Hibernia is another one, like, that's a few blocks away. But they're, they're just, it's wild. What's that? Prospect Street is a drag strip. Yeah, Main Street is.
And Forest.
Yeah, Forest. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so we just need, I think just some gentle reminders to people.
Yeah.
But anyway, we could figure out where later, but we just, and we all know the ones that aren't going to follow it are never going to follow it. Right? But sometimes you just need, you know, were you going to say something, Derek?
Yeah, just, I think around the, like, we have two schools in town and a third with Meadowfields being just outside of town. But those might be good areas to start. I know the one we did at Beacon Park was noticed quite quickly, I think, by people. And I think it's working. So I think, you know, around schools, we're going to have, schools go back in with thousands of students in a few weeks and that might be a good area. And then the other one that I brought up before was Waverly Street. And I know there's some, I think there's something around Waverly Street. I don't know exactly, but I'm not sure if it's actually a town road or, I'm not sure. But it's, going on that street, cars are going quite fast. And we have the Hope Center and, sorry, Kane Anderson and the Legion coming out of there as well. But there's so many people working on that street and cars and trucks in and out. And then the shouldering is really not great. And I'm not sure, I don't know whose responsibility that is. If it's the property owners or our job, maybe to put up a few signs saying like, you know, "Slow down working vehicles" or something along those lines might help. Just because I can see, I've had a couple of times that I've gone up that street that have been dangerous. And typically, unless I'm shopping at Pleasant Supplies, I try to stay away from that street.
Okay. Anyone else? We don't need a big, I don't think we need anything grand. We just need to pop a couple of signs here and there and just gently remind people, sadly. Although when I go over the Halifax Bridge and that flashes, my foot goes on the brake.
Yeah.
Right? Because I just want to get over quickly because I hate heights.
But I tend to. And it's not unfair that what Gil says. There's a group of people who actually try to play the rules.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah.
You're never going to get the ones who are refusing to play the rules.
Absolutely. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Asset retirement obligation policy. So the recommended motion there is to recommend that council adopt the asset retirement obligation policy as presented. So moved?
You could just say yes. Did any of you are actually able to read it?
Whoa.
Without, without having to like read it three times to try to understand it?
Oh, without three, I was going to say, three times, yes. But I read most things today three times. Anybody have any questions for Jerry on this one? Because he's sitting here willing and able to explain, but if we don't need it, then... Okay, did we have a seconder? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Yes?
I just want to say that that has been a lot of work for the finance department in the last year. As a member of the Audit Committee, I just want to say thank you for the work that they've done. And, yeah, yeah, a lot of work.
Okay. So we've got the, I'm trying to go fast because I have a dinner appointment. Additional dogway stations. Look at that list. Okay. So we've, we've got a list there, so what's the idea to just say, you know, let's do it, let's do some? Go ahead, Counselor Heather.
I don't, there's no motion on the floor, anything I can just speak to this? Okay, just looking at, at the list, I just wondered about, I don't see the new active transportation trail on here at all, at all, that I can kind of identify, and just wondering about that, because I'm assuming that there are people that walk on there with their, with their dogs, I don't, I don't know, but maybe Counselor Cleveland can, might know more, because you spend more time on that trail, but I'm just thinking that that would be a place that might be appropriate, so.
Chad might have a answer.
So, we're open to suggestions, but, you know, we can't put, respectfully, we can't put dog waste stations everywhere, we kind of chose Trailhead, I'm a recent dog owner, and I've traveled to town a few times, in either park on Prospect Street or down by the wastewater plant, I think those are ideal locations where people maybe travel from out of town and realize they haven't brought a dog bag, but for those of you who live in town and own dogs, you know, again, we're open to suggestions. We thought, we thought this would be a good starting point.
I have just one, actually, one spot that, and again, I'm, I'm out walking and running all over the place all the time, and while I agree, you're, that's a fair, a fair statement, you know, on the active living trails, there's so much of it, that, I mean, it'd be almost, where would you put it, almost, but I would like to see one, and maybe you'll roll your eyes at this one, but I'd love to see it at the entrance, the Argyle Street entrance to the water park, and I don't see it there. I see Water Street, but I don't see the water park, as you go into the water park. Now, in the back there...
I don't know where you mean.
Broadbrook, the water, the water park. Yeah, I am talking about, I'm talking about where the water park is, you've got a whole facility there, okay, you've got the, the entranceway to the park itself on Argyle Street, which is where I'd like to see one, because you've got, you've got the dog park way in the back, and there are probably some there, I don't know, I never take my dog there, she spends all of her time sniffing, so I don't bother, but I, there are a lot of people taking their dogs for walks with the, with the ducks and stuff that go on there, that's the part, I'm talking about the park, there's one entranceway on Forest Street, and there's one on Argyle Street, the Broadbrook, is it called the Broadbrook Water Park? Wetland Trail, there you go.
Go ahead.
There are access points at Pleasant, at the end of Albert, at Forest Street, across from Castle Building Supplies, and at the Southeast Street exit, and then that Southeast Street exit, you can, you can walk on the sewer corridor to Argyle, but that's not...
Yeah, I'm wrong about Argyle, I'm sorry, that was, that's a, that's a brain fart. I meant Pleasant, that's where I go, Pleasant from across the way.
Yeah.
Not allowed to say fart in public, anyway, but that's what that was, I apologize, but that's where I'd like to see one, I think it would be a useful spot, because there's dogs up and down there all the time, including mine.
Thank you.
He's doing more than farting, that's why he needs a bag.
I think it's a good place, and it's particularly a good place because there is actually a waste receptacle station at the other end of the Broad, the Wetland Park Trail there, at the parking lot, so, you know, take your bag, do the business, dispose of it, very good.
Yeah, so, so I want to sort of say this and ask this at the same time, I mean, we had three dogs, always bring our bags, never leave them anywhere, so I don't, I don't want to feel like we are, the town is providing bags to everybody and their dog, literally, okay? We don't, that's not where we want to go, I guess I'm, I'm with the responsible pet owners that took, that forgot, or, you know, don't have a place to, so it might just be a couple more garbage cans in places too, right, which is a lot cheaper, but then again, I'm like, is this, is the stuff gonna make the garbage can? It's hard, like, you can't fix it, you can't fix it, and you can't put, you know, people are like, you need to put garbage cans, like, on every block, no, you need to not have a dog if you can't carry the poop, really, I don't like carrying it, but, you know, if you, you know, you have to, like, you have to, so I, I guess I don't want you and your team to feel like, or saying, we gotta fix this, because, because we don't, but how do we make it just a little bit better so that they're kind of, you know, they're not all in one place, or, and I think we got a good start. Yeah.
So, just, sorry, just to clarify, Counselor Cleveland, the Broadbrook Trail at Pleasant Street and Southeast, is that what you're recalling?
No, I was only talking about the Pleasant, the Pleasant Street entrance you walk your way through, and I apologize, that was confusing, I couldn't figure out, nobody could understand me, maybe I had a stroke or something.
All right, so, we're good on this, and then we can make a decision sometime?
You don't need to make a decision, you've got somebody who can work with it, and you'll look after it, but it's open to suggestions, so, I have a suggestion.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so the next thing is the downtown smoking receptacles, can I speak on this first? Okay, so, Heather, you can help me with this, because we had, we've had a conversation, we were out for a walk, and it's like, wait a minute, people aren't supposed to be smoking so far from buildings anyway, why are we gonna put up smoking receptacles to encourage people to smoke where they're not supposed to smoke? D U H, that's duh for brain fart, when I, you know, so, I'm just, do you want to say something, like, I don't, I don't know, I think you were more eloquent than I was when we kind of...
I see Chad has identified that in his chart that he has presented to us, showing that there were very few spots actually on Main Street that we could actually put up a smoking receptacle, because basically the buffer was that, you know, people couldn't, couldn't smoke, and I see he also said that there had been one down on Main Street, I think the remains of it had been just removed, the last remains of it had just been removed because there had been one there, and it had been destroyed, and, so, you know, I guess I just question the feasibility of putting them up, and if by putting them up, we are encouraging smoking, whether, you know, that's the message that we should be as, as a town, be presenting to our, to our people, and if I thought we were, by putting them up, they would actually get used, I would say yes, but I don't know that they would actually get used, and I don't know that when we did have one up there, Chad, was it, was it used before it was vandalized?
It was used, but then it was picked through for cigarette butts.
Cigarette butts, so, yeah, so I just, I just have some reservations about what the message is, is that we're, that we're giving by putting up cigarette things.
Thank you, thank you, and the other thing is, and you're right, these are locations where it can happen, do we want to turn any of these three spots into a place where, where, where people are unable to go, because a lot of people are allergic to the smoke, right, and I, I mean, I respect that people do smoke, and that's, you know, your privilege and you're right, and we respect that, but other people are allergic, or, you know, I'm not going to bring my kids around it, and things like that, so, so it's a, so it's a tough one, after I see there's a second sober thought, right, it's a tough one, so, we didn't make a motion, and I had, I had put it on before, and I'm more than glad to just say, drop it, but it's, you know, go ahead.
In my experience, and this is only speaking for myself, but in my experience, people don't use them, and so why spend money on something that somebody's going to wreck and is never going to fulfill its intended use anyway? That's, that's my humble opinion.
Does anybody disagree with just leaving it, or, it's a tough one, I know, but they're, they're all gonna end up on the, so I just look at the mess that gets picked up every day, it's almost like folks don't realize cigarette butts are litter. Sorry, Counselor Baugh.
Thank you, Your Worship, yeah, I mean, just playing devil's advocate, I think of how disgusting it is to walk outside of the hospital, every time I walk outside of the hospital, and see the just disgusting number of cigarette butts that are all over the entryway, and they're there because there's no smoking allowed on the property, and so therefore there are no receptacles for cigarette butts, and that's, that's the problem, isn't it? That's the problem, so I, I'm just torn, and I don't, I don't have enough of an opinion one way or the other to sway a vote, I'm happy with whatever the decision is, but I think it's important to recognize that, you know, if you don't put receptacles out, you have to be prepared to do, and I mean, it's, it's dangerous, this, the cigarette butts are actually dangerous, they contain nicotine, if kids eat them, it's not a good thing, if birds eat them, it's not a good thing, so...
And we're probably gonna have just as many on the ground if we had the receptacle, right? Like, that's the issue.
So, we'll save some money maybe and not have any.
Are you okay, is anybody not okay with just leaving this? You okay with it? Good. Chad, not only did we save money, but we just saved you some time, but, sorry you had to do this, but thank you.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Heather, your light's on. Safety signage around Beacon Park? Did that.
Yeah, that's completed, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so we've got, we've got correspondence, was there anything on, in the correspondence list that we needed to do, is that just for information? I think we were good. Okay, November 16th. Yeah. Can we pass it, would you mind passing it on to Todd? Yeah, he's, he's got the lights, I know. Okay? Anything else there? I did look through them. Okay, we've done the additions? Okay, motion to go in camera. All right, thank you.